Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call the Monday, August 4th Board of Supervisors' regular meeting to order. Just one note, Supervisor Smith is in a vehicle, so she's not joining us during the day, but does plan to join us this evening from...
Clonia Beach.
Clonia Beach. Thank you.
Welcome.
All right. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moment of silence. Thank you.
Madam Chair, will make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Hold on a second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The presentation we have today is by our superintendent, Dr. Grimsley. Welcome back.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon. I'm missing you all. Could be a more beautiful day outside. Oh, my goodness. I love this weather. So, so much has happened since my last report. We are returning to school after a very successful and very eventful summer, which included summer school, Pathways Academy, Band Camp, Summer Quest, Regional Governor's School, and our second year of offering Spark Camp. But when I wrote this, I said close to 150. That was the last number I had of students participating. This year it was 167. So, we did go up quite a bit. Spark offered academic, social, creative, and fun activities for students every weekday all summer long for our families. It was a huge collaborative effort between RCPS Headwaters and CCLC, and each agency leveraged resources to help raise the nearly $200,000 it takes to run this summer program, to make it a reality for families of Rapid Hennick. Surveys are out now, and all who were involved with Spark program are encouraged to provide feedback as we plan for next year's Spark Camp. Thank you all so much for helping support and advocate for this effort. It continues to be an essential program for so many of our working families in the community. We are gearing up to start school next week. Much has been done in welcoming our new teachers and staff to Rapid Hennick County schools. New teachers, as is customary, underwent an orientation to acclimate them to RCPS, as well as provide essential training to begin the year. They spend time with their mentors, introducing them to essential knowledge about RCPS, and even received a special bus ride, a special surprise bus driver, to their lunch in on the first day. We are so thrilled to have a wonderful, talented new staff joining us this year, many bringing with them many years of experience in education. And even with another year of high turnover, I am very proud to say that all of our full-time instructional positions are completely and fully staffed. So, we are very excited about that. All of our teachers and staff will return this Wednesday for convocation at RCHS, followed by a very busy back-to-school schedule with essential staff development, much focused on our installation year of implementing the Virginia-tiered system of supports across all domains: academic, behavioral attendance, staff support, et cetera, and the expansion of the Virginia Literacy Act. And that's going up all the way through eighth grade this year. So, it will be a very busy, but very rewarding year. Meet the Teacher Night is Monday, August 11th, complete with a back-to-school bash hosted by the elementary school that will take place from 1:00 to 4:00 and 5:00 to 7:00. Free haircuts are going to be offered. We have a petting zoo. So, we hope that you'll come by and see us for back-to-school. Meet the Teacher Night, Monday, August 11th. Any time between 1:00 and 4:00. Then, there's a little dinner break for our staff, and then 5:00 to 7:00. We would love to have you come and say hello to our teachers and parents and see some of the continued improvements and updates in our facilities. We know you will be pleased with all the updates and maintenance that was able to be done, especially with a very stunning mural in the RCES cafeteria, thanks to our incredible PTO. We will welcome students back with open hearts, minds, and arms, of course, on August 12th for the first day of school. And then, finally, a new component on my reports, as we requested, that was requested last year, is a little segment for any budget items of interest early on. So, I will include that each month, if that's okay with you. Today's Budget Update of the Month focuses on transportation. So, I'm sure you've heard a little bit about this. Much attention and discussion has taken place over the last couple of years regarding optimizing our aging fleet and streamlining our bus routes. To that end, we appreciate the board's support in purchasing two new school buses who have been on order. Will be made sometime in October, and hopefully, we'll have them by January or February. So, that's the typical turnaround time on those. Also, the school board and its operational budget was able to maintain funding to support the purchase of another school bus in order to maintain the fleet. This was discussed in our budget meetings. But we have had an amazing opportunity land in our lap with a surplus that came out of a big division. You all had talked to us a lot about, is there any way about, you know, we could consider purchasing used buses? Lot of cases, the used buses that we have access to are already 100-plus thousand miles, many, many years. It would cost more to keep them running than it would be to offer it. But in this case, a surplus was done on a large, large school district. The vendor had a connection with our guys in the shop and called them first and said, hey, we have three buses that you could purchase for the price of one, and all of them under 50,000 miles and in great condition with AC. So, they went down immediately to check them out and did the inspections and everything. So, we are going to move forward and get three gently-used buses. So, that'll put our fleet in great shape. So, we're really excited about that. And additionally, if you recall, we talked a lot about ridership and how that's tabulated at the beginning of the year, and streamlining routes where they made sense. We talked a lot about how it's really, our routes have to be mapped by Department of Education guidelines by what parents request as potential ridership. That never equates to what's actually tabulated on the bus as actual ridership, because you have sports, you have people picking up their kids. It's never the exact amount that you plan for. However, after all of our discussions, we did maintain a record of all actual ridership on every route across the year to make, see, you know, what we were dealing with and if it was feasible. Add to that that we lost four bus drivers last year, and we only have 15 routes. We did hire on all four initially, but then two of them backed out very recently. So, that caused us to have to rethink our routing really quickly. So, we are down to 13 routes at this point because of this bus driver shortage. Our two new collapsed routes, however, are still staying well under an hour. So, that was a goal. Our longest route is still Bus 11. That's Ronnie's route. It's always been 82 minutes. So, we didn't make any changes there. We can't to that route. This will allow us to better ensure full coverage, more flexibility for our extracurriculars, of course, you need to be able to pull them for those routes. However, we would still love to expand our substitute pool of drivers beyond me. If anyone can come help, there is, we will take care of all of your training. There's a sign-on bonus. If I can do it, you can do it. It's a lot of fun. It is a great gig, but we do need some sub-drivers. That would be wonderful. As always, thank you for your continued support of the schools, and we really do hope you'll come out to back-to-school night.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Whitson?
Thank you. First of all, I appreciate the standalone budget fiscal-related update. I know it was something that I suggested strongly. So, thank you. We're off to a good start. And you know that fleet optimization is near and dear to my heart. And again, speaking on behalf of my very observant constituents, I think, in real-world terms, the concern that people have is they see a big school bus with four students on it and ask the question, how can that be? And why would that be? So, I think if we just keep thinking through this and you employ your creative cost-saving skills, which I know you can do, maybe we'll end up somewhere good. And I know it's been a long discussion. I've got some hard stuff to mention to you and ask you today, and normally, I would at least give you a courtesy heads-up. So, if there's not anything, if there's anything you cannot respond to immediately, no problem. We can talk about it later. What's your enrollment likely going to look like at the elementary school on, let's say, September 5th, or, you know, after Labor Day? What do you expect at the elementary school?
At the elementary, we looked like we were going to be up a little bit over 500.
Okay.
But we will not know that officially until after our 10-day enrollment numbers.
Okay. What does the Code of Virginia require, or when does the Code of Virginia say that a elementary school is required to have an assistant principal?
The SOQ number for that, for an assistant principal, I'd have to pull the SOQ, but I can pull that.
I believe it's 600 students.
I believe it's 600, too. Yes.
If your enrollment on September 5th is going to be 500, more or less, and recognizing that, and I don't think I need to rehash our last budget season discussion, but, and I'll just cut to the chase, where things are tight.
Mm-hmm.
If you are not required, if you're not required under the Code of Virginia to have a vice or assistant principal, then why did you just hire one?
That's actually a pretty simple question on all of our standards of quality. Because of our numbers, the standards of quality will say, because you have this number, you need .75 of an assistant principal, not a whole one. So, if I put out a job description for a three-quarters position with, you know, you don't, you can't really hire for that. Same with teachers. It'll say you need 3.2 or 3.4 of what the standards are. So, doesn't mean you shouldn't have one at all. In fact, they will say that's a discrepancy in what the prevailing costs of actual sustainable positions are in schools. So, it's not a matter of overstaffing. It would be a matter of understaffing and burning out the people that are responsible for those roles. So...
Do you have, do you have any recollection, including prior to your tenure, when the elementary school first had an assistant principal?
Gosh, we've had an assistant principal there ever since I've been employed almost 20 years.
Okay.
Yeah. Now, at the high school, we did change that many, quite a few years ago, where we did condense that position and collapsed into a teacher administrative assistant to the principal, was not a vice-principal position because of numbers, and that we've morphed that since to be, take over the career technical education coordinator position plus AP. So, it's a combined role.
Okay.
And those positions, too, at the elementary, do have combined responsibilities that are not usually just AP.
Okay. And going back to your response to my question about what the Code of Virginia stipulates, I would like to understand better this link between the standards of quality and the actual language in the Code of Virginia.
Sure.
That I read on its face to say enrollment above 600 students then requires an assistant principal. I want to make sure that that, my reading of that as black and white is, in fact, incorrect, and that your interpretation of it, that you would have to somehow find someone who's three-quarters of a person.
Well, and there are two different spots. So, the standards of quality position, you're right. A school is not required by law to have an assistant principal with school below 600. However, state funding will be provided up to this amount of that position to, because you need that support in a school. I mean, that's the, how the standards of quality funding formula works. And that's been in our budget documents, too. That's no secret. You can see every support position, what percentage that the standards of quality will fund.
Okay. And then, just two other things. We talked about it last year, and you mentioned it in passing, staff turnover. As a member of this board, I don't want to get into those weeds, what might be going on there, but I continue to hear from constituents, some who have a direct or past role in the school system, making statements to the effect that there's excessive personnel costs tied to non-instructional overhead. And I wonder if, for the second year row with your high instructor turnover, if we can't ask you and the school board to take a serious look at how to direct more of the money that's transferred to you from our taxpayers toward better salaries for those who are engaged in direct instruction.
Absolutely.
For our students.
That's what's been a main, main goal of ours for a while, and we did a lot of work to that scale this year.
Which gets to my last point. You'll hear tonight, when we get to the courthouse discussion, that I will call my colleagues to freeze school funding at fiscal year '24 levels at $9.5 million through the end of fiscal year '28 or '29, to give us breathing room so that we can proceed on the courthouse without breaking the bank and overburdening our residents with a 15% tax increase. And while that sounds harsh, and while I'm not certain that I'll have support for such a position, out of respect to you, because I like you a lot, I wanted to at least know that that's where I stand. And I've already said that I'm already done on my decision for school funding come our next budget year. So, to the extent that my idea were to stick, or a majority of my colleagues were to agree with freezing school funding to give us some space and give our taxpayers some space as we proceed on this very burdensome courthouse project, not to mention our efforts on the EMS and paid provider system, I just want you to start thinking now about what that might look like and what you might have to do to work with what we provide, as opposed to us backing into what you request. That's all. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Grimsley. I've got a couple of questions. But I first wanted to start out with the summer camp. I remember the last time you told us there was 150 kids, and then you said you ended it with 166?
Yes, 167.
167. And I just wanted to hear some of the feedback. Have you gotten feedback from parents?
Yes.
And just generally?
Very positive. In fact, I was just in the corner store this weekend, and one of the parents of two sons that was in Spark, they knew it was, I had my Spark shirt on because we had just done the celebration at the park. And he said, that has been a lifesaver for my family. Thank you so much for offering it. This was wonderful. My boys had so much fun. They came home tired every single day. So, they really loved the program, from what I'm hearing. And we have a survey out, and it's been very positive feedback. Minor changes to, like, some logistical things that we're getting great feedback on, as we did last year. So, they're already starting planning for it.
Is this the third or second year?
This was the second year.
The second year. That's fantastic. It's also really good news to hear about the buses.
Yeah.
So, does that mean you got three buses for 155?
That's right.
And do you have a plan for where that extra money's going to go? For the second bus? We gave you money for two buses.
No, no, no. Not yours. The one we had in our operational budget.
Got it.
We used our funding that we were going to get an additional bus on that. So, we got three for the price of one.
Excellent.
Five buses are...
Five.
So, we shouldn't have to talk about buses for a while.
No bus talk.
There shouldn't be.
I see.
But I will put it on your radar for the next one that we would be looking at replacing as our Bluebird aging ADA accessible bus. Those ones tend to run a little bit pricier, but it gives us some breathing room, and that one is still operational, but it's reaching the age restriction.
Got it. And so, the Virginia statute that Mr. Whitson brought up, it sounds like it requires an assistant principal at 600. But below that, there's no requirement.
Correct.
Can you give me a real quick of the hierarchy of, you don't have to start with you, but just at the elementary school?
At the elementary school, it's really your principal when you're assistant principal. That's who runs the building.
Who's below the assistant principal?
You have your support staff. We started a teacher leadership program that allowed teachers to step into administrative roles without having to have a full position that can act as designees and learn and get their licensure that way. So, once they will, they can select designees to be in charge of, in case there's, and learn the roles of administration.
But their instructional staff as well?
Yes.
Okay. So, how many kids are there? 500?
Yeah, right around 500.
And so, you have one principal for 500 kids. And so, if, if in the 20 years, let's see. So, I'm the only person on this board who's gone to the school, and I cannot remember if in 1986, there was an assistant principal at the elementary school. Do you know?
No, I easily could check it, but...
I wouldn't expect you to know off the top of your head.
I was only three.
But, and I'm not, yeah, exactly. I was six. And I'm not suggesting that this is what Mr. Whitson's suggesting, but, so if you were to eliminate that assistant principal position, you'd be dealing with just instructional staff and then one principal for 500 children.
Correct.
How many children?
How many metal detectors do we have at the school?
We don't have any right now. May need to put some in.
Cameras. How many cameras do we have there?
We do have quite a few cameras, yes.
But do you know how many?
Again, I don't know off the top of my hand, but, and that's something we look at every year, any areas of vulnerability, make sure we have coverage.
I see. I do know that at RSW, we got that grant, and we did get a crazy body scanner. Remember that a couple of years ago? And I do know that schools are getting that, but we don't have anything like that, correct?
We have quite a few safety features, and all of that's detailed to our board, but we don't say too much about it, because you'd also want to, you know, have security that, but yes, we have, we have coverage with our cameras. We have different detection systems that cover our buildings. That's about as much as I can say about those.
Just from my knowledge, so while you've been here, you've not authorized the position of an assistant principal. You never didn't have one, then rehired?
No.
Would that decision be your decision or the school board's?
In conjunction. We would make a recommendation to the school board based on need.
Okay. And the way that the SOQs are going, you basically need like .75.
Right. And that's what the funding you'll receive. And assistant principal was one of the, I think that was the position that was cited as the most disparate with actual prevailing cost. That's what the supplemental, not basic aid, the support position gap was all about, and why we're losing funding on that, because schools have to hire over what SOQ requires in general, especially for roles like assistant principal.
Right. Got it. So, do you think that the statistic holds true that at the elementary school, 83% of that budget goes towards instructional staff? Do you think that that's relatively accurate?
Goes toward personnel.
Goes towards personnel.
Mostly instructional.
Mr. Whitson asked about instructional staff. So, you have two administrative positions, basically. Have you, you've got assistant principal and principal.
At the elementary, yes.
And then, you have instructional staff. But you do have some that you're not going to call instructional staff.
I mean, they're all, your principal is actually labeled as the instructional leader of a building. They have to be instructional savvy and know the rules and know good instruction and be able to model that instruction and
Right.
Review data and mitigate any gaps and achievement gaps. So, I mean, that is a, it's a high instructional role. I would argue that a lot of our support positions are instructional-based because they inform, direct, and help support your instructors.
Got it.
Yeah.
Got it. Well, I'm just going to say this on the record. I don't think that having an assistant principal at the elementary school is extreme. It seems to me to be completely reasonable and rational, and I'm glad that I've supported it. And I think that in the past five years, where we've had a 5%, 5%, 3%, 3%, 3% raise for teachers in our school, as everybody knows, and not that we have to hash this out again, but I don't think we're doing our fair share to fund the school. So, thank you, Dr. Grimsley.
Appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
So, I have a couple of follow-up questions slash statements. Already kind of joked about one. I think that's wonderful that you all bought the three buses for the price of one. Kudos to your, the relationships that your, the transportation, you know, that they have in place. Because at the last meeting, I think I shared with everyone that in neighboring county, they're faced with buying 15 new buses this year. So, I'm glad that we snagged the cheaper buses. That was really smart. I do hope that we don't have to talk about buses too much. You already answered one of my questions with the collapse of some of those routes. I was concerned about the length of time that the students are on the bus. You know, just, I hear from teachers that by the time, if they're on the bus too long, by the time they get to school, they're dealing with problems that parents don't even like to deal with, let alone teachers. To answer, I don't know when the elementary school first got an assistant principal, but I can tell you that my son entered that elementary school in 2013, right?
Yeah.
Right?
That's right.
2013, and there was an assistant principal at that school then. I can tell you that the assistant principal manages a lot of the discipline issues. I know that, because on the bus, my son was, you know, he was being picked on, and his lunch was being stolen. And it was the assistant principal at that time that took care of that swiftly and very well. And the other thing I wanted to say is I noticed in the new assistant principal's bio that you put out, he has, first of all, he has some pretty impressive leadership skills already. Secondly, I noticed that one of his specialties is English as a second language.
Correct.
So, as I recall, some of the issues from the budget last year is an increase in our English, our ESL students. So, this is a nice specialty that we will have in place and at an earlier stage. And then, lastly, not that it's worth all that much, but again, I'll speak to relationships. I happen to have a very good in with HR personnel in Monassa City Schools. So, I did my own little digging, and I think we have a gem. So, I, you know, I hope that that works out. Then, the other question that I have is really about dual enrollment, all of the recent changes in dual enrollment. So, I think those changes, they negatively impacted the college to a certain degree, but I think they're a good thing for high school students. Is that so? And how are you responding to it? Because now, if that's a bigger question, we can save it for later, but it is on my mind.
No, it's on everybody's mind right now. It's very pertinent, as a lot of parents are asking questions about their student schedule right now. So, for those who don't know, there was a law enacted this spring that requires the community colleges to fund at full cost for students duly enrolled for certain classes, universal studies certificate classes and passport classes. However, there is some difficulty in that, because if it's offered at a certain point in time by a, like a Laurel Ridge professor, then they can cover that. However, if we can't fit that into the block of scheduling with our students, then there's a cost associated with that. And that cost passes on to families. So, we have different issues with that. So, communication has been tough, but the rules have been changing a lot, and we have been waiting on, and community colleges, too. I'm sure you guys are doing the same thing with VCCS and, you know, just trying to work out all the kinks. So, we've been working really tou, really hard, and you'll see adjunct faculty positions. That's our way to try to get dual-enroll certified under our payroll, under an adjunct part-time, which we have funding in the budget already for. But instead of throwing it at tuition offset, we would put it toward a staffer who can offer that. Then, it would be no cost, because it's our person, and we can still offer those dual enrollment opportunities. So, those are some of the ways we're responding, but the information has not been very clear, and it's been very tough to communicate.
And it's changing.
It just keeps changing, yeah.
It's changing every day. I can speak to that. So...
Absolutely.
That's it. That's all I had.
Thank you.
I did give you a heads-up, because I'm wondering to make sure I'm asking some pertinent questions, and luckily, I had help from my school board member. So, the two questions I have are related to transportation. The one is transportation and facilities investments, how they enhance the learning environment for students and staff. So, what we're hearing a lot from the citizens is, you're spending the money, how's it really helping my kid?
Right.
So...
Well, yeah, in the learning environment, that's a facilities issue, and it is part of, the aesthetic of your building is part of the learning environment. So, we do take that very seriously. However, you know, when we have to move some funds around, we have a certain amount for infrastructure modernization, and that goes toward our facilities upgrade. We were able to get the three buses. So, that did not leave us a whole lot of room to do any major projects over the summer. However, I mean, they did get done quite a bit with the little bit that they had, and kudos to Dr. Bolt for always looking for the lowest price possible, but the best quality work. So, there was a revamp and revitalization of the septic tank at the lagoon at the elementary school. There were some targeted upgrades that were specific to security. That was a priority for our board as well. So, looking at exterior doors and making sure locking mechanisms and those types of things. And we had some help with our safety and security grant for those things. Routine maintenance and painting and tile and cleaning and all those things, that's in our maintenance budget. So, those are the main things we got done. But like I said, the PTO mural in the elementary, that is just gonna, I didn't even tell my son about it. I can't wait for him to see it and walk in and see what's a group.
All right. The second question, in what ways are we preparing students to not only meet standards, but to excel beyond them, while also maintaining a connection or problem-solving around community needs?
Yeah. So, I like that question a lot, because it... Yeah, so I like that question a lot because it, as we all know, accreditation and accountability system has changed quite a lot at the state level. And in a lot of ways, it's, bigger schools will struggle with that new accountability system. For us, we have a great shot at being a distinguished school according to the new metrics. They are higher standards, and they give you credit for some of the things that we're doing in innovative problem solving, like our EMR program and our, we just met with the sheriff this week to talk about a new public safety program that we want to work through. And we're trying to meet the need of our community as well. So training up first responders and meeting that need and getting kids more involved in high-quality work-based learning. You'll see us mention that a lot this year. That is something that the state is pushing. And having kids that are involved in those classes get actual relevant work-based learning in the community. You'll be seeing our kids out there a whole lot more this year if everything goes well, providing some supports for our community members and hopefully working on some bigger projects.
Awesome. Thank you.
I forgot just to say one more, one thing. I'm sorry. I just, I want to say that, you know, you and I have met several times since February. So while I, I share Supervisor Whitson's sentiment in that we've, we've got some big projects. We've got some really big projects. So while I am not going to declare today what I am going to do a year from today because I don't even know what I'm going to have for dinner tonight. Definitely not going to make any bold statement about what I will do or expect in the months to come. But I do hope that you, as we continue to march down this, this year, you continue to, to do things like buy three school buses for the price of one and, and really tighten up your staffing and, and make decisions that are not only good for our children because the children, that has to be first and foremost, but keep the other needs of the county in mind.
Well said.
Thank you, Dr. Grimsley.
Thank you so much.
Thanks so much.
You're going to have to budget a little more time for us, I think.
I think so, yeah.
All right, next we have a public comment. Given the number in the room, we can go with five minutes. Anyone wishing to speak, please be recognized, come up, give us your name and your district, and we will keep you to the five minutes. Not everybody at once.
Get one to Christine.
Sure.
Ron McElrath from Jackson District. What I'd like to speak to today is about, it's in your, it's in the agenda under information, but it has to do with the church school, or church school, the church project next door. So first, I've got the list of concerns here and then some specifics and the pages that follow. First, what is the purpose of the project? It's, it's, could, could be costly, and I think it needs to be laid out for people. Is there, is there an overall plan for the whole project? And what's going to be the projected cost? And do the taxpayers want to pay what it's going to cost to take care of that project? Because like I said, it could be pricey. The building is in poor condition at this time. The building needs repair of termite and rot damage, all-new windows, wall insulation, evaluation of the metal roof and possible replacement. The siding needs to be stripped, sealed with waterproofing and painted. And by the way, all the paint in that building is lead-based. And the gutter boards and fascia boards are in bad condition, so these need to be replaced. And basically, all that exterior work should be done before any work is started on the interior because you've got to, you've got to seal up the pack or the outside first and then move inside. That's pretty much normal on renovation projects. Going to the next page, this has to do with the ADA factors in, in the plans that are in your agenda. And the picture here on this next page shows basically the entrance that they're proposing for this, for the building now. And you need to read that little pink recommendation down there in that as far as this type of entryway, the landing has to be such that there's not a chance that somebody's going to fall off the steps backwards with it. So now when you go to the third page, that's just the proposal that comes from the plans that are in the agenda right now. And the circle there is your five-foot circle that is, shows you your ADA recommendations. But what you can see there, the pink line on the steps, that's like about five inches from this, from the circle. And so if someone's in a wheelchair trying to get into the building and they go back five inches too far, they may go backwards down the steps. That's why the previous drawing shows that you've got to have sufficient space in, in there for people to operate. And then the next part of it is that ADA requires thirty-two inches of clear space for entry into a building. And what you've got here on the building right now, and according to the plans that you're submitted, there's no change in the, in the width on the entryway, is you've got a sixty-inch opening, which is going to have double doors. So that gives you thirty-inch doors, which is going to provide you with a twenty-eight inch opening because according to ADA, one, one door has to open up so that someone can enter in a wheelchair. So there's, there's not sufficient space. In that doorway, sixty inches has to be, it has to go to these sixty-eight inches, which is going to require reframing that whole thing. Or another thing that could be done, because it's proposed for a double door right now, is you can reduce it down to a single door and make it thirty, one thirty-six inch door entering the building. And that probably would be a better, a better option. And the other thing on it is that it needs to, you need to make sure that that door has a window in it. Because if it's not, a person leaving the building doesn't know it's on the other side. And there could be a person with a walker or whatever getting ready to come in, and they push the door open, and it's going to, it's going to knock them down. So that's, it's sort of a recommendation a lot on ADA doors, that there are windows so you can see both sides. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mark Anderson from Piedmont District. I wanted to put a couple of informal comments in about the new subdivision ordinance that we have to draft to comply with what Richmond has dumped upon our heads in the last three months. When I first read about the new bill, I was sort of shocked because procedurally, it's a huge change for the way this county has handled subdivision applications. And because I lived in Northern Virginia so long, I immediately assumed this was a payoff to developers from somewhere who were having difficulty getting their subdivision applications approved. And yet I looked up the voting on the bill, which occurred in Richmond. It was bipartisan. It was overwhelming in both houses. So I don't know how they pitched it there. If I were a good law student, I'd know the legislative history of the bill, but I don't. So I assumed that the pitch was this, this will create more housing lots, therefore more housing, therefore more affordable housing, and all will be wonderful. But for us, shifting all the responsibility for determining whether a subdivision application is a complete, appropriate, or whatever, it's going to be placed on one person without too much help from your, your board or from the planning commission. But I don't think all is terrible about this. If it's really and truly a mistake that was made at Richmond, it'll be corrected in the next, the next legislative session, or at least amended or something. The zoning code remains in effect, so zoning is still enforceable as to whatever uses would be made of the subdivision. And I think we could do more in the way of amending the subdivision ordinance is that the proposed draft you have, I think, is really workmanlike and it complies with everything else. But we're still, I think, we're still looking for a way to get control of the process a little better than to just dump it on one person's shoulders. For example, there's, there's nothing in it that I read that would stop the county official from holding a public hearing and taking input from the public over the proposed subdivision. That's something that the planning commission has done, and I think it's been very valuable because it raises issues that nobody else may have thought of. Also, I think we could plus up our subdivision ordinance as to maybe have some input from the planning commission as advice to whichever zoning official gets stuck with this duty. I suggest or submit that we should try to do everything that doesn't get us into litigation over trying to increase our influence over the subdivision process. The county attorney will tell you that, there's a legal doctrine called the Diller Rule that says basically if we're in a fight with the state over whose regulations control the state wins, we don't want to do that, and we don't want to have to go to court to find the answer to that. But we have a lot of expertise on the planning commission. We have, I think it's the Berkeley Group advising the planning commission. Probably other counties are raising the same issue as we are. Because they made it only five thousand people in a county, did you figure out how many counties that includes? Four. So just changing the number from five thousand to ten thousand isn't going to be the total solution. It'll help us. But there, there's something more that needs to be done with this. And I, I regret that you have to spend a lot of time and energy on this when we had a happy little system going before July first. But I wish you well.
Thanks, Mark.
John Cappielli of the Hampton District. I hadn't thought about it a whole lot until just a few minutes ago about the new subdivision rules. And I read them when they were first proposed about a year ago, and then I read what was passed. And while it will be more work for our zoning person, because we only have one as a staff, and she's already stretched, then maybe she needs an assistant, which I would not argue with one bit. With that said, I'm happy to see that this may turn over from a popularity contest as to who gets a permit and who doesn't get a permit. Because it'll be a set of rules that will be followed instead of how somebody felt after they had dinner that night, or how their neighbor feels about it, or the guy on the other side of the county, or even people that come from outside of the county that used to live here that want to see how they can keep the county the way that it was. Part of the discussion here earlier is about taxes. Well, if you have less people, you have less taxes. If you have a little bit more people, I'm not saying open the door and become Alexandria, but a couple more people and different values on the properties, which would not be agricultural zone properties, but residential properties, which would raise taxes. With taxes in mind, I've been a proponent of changing the formula for land use properties by a penny or two pennies. Not a huge amount of money. There are people that have very large pieces of property who are very wealthy, and they have a large piece of property that has a piece of it cut for hay. They don't use it as income. Somebody comes and cuts it, hauls it off, and gives them a certificate, and that allows them to cut their property taxes in half. And that's huge. That's not performing any kind of agricultural themselves on that property. And last but not least, when we're talking about the budgets of things like the school, this is Grimsley, I've watched her, I, I don't even have kids in the school. My kids haven't gone to school here. But this weekend, I'm going to go help fix the soccer field for free because it's the right thing to do for our community. And this woman has given up in order to help her teachers and her budget. She's given up her housing allowance. She didn't take it. She didn't take an income increase on her new contract. She didn't take the car that she's supposed to get, anything like that. And yet, here she is being squeezed in public to see what juice you can get out of the squeeze. Sometimes the squeeze isn't worth the juice, and this is one of those occasions. She's not asking to have her office gold leaf like somebody else recently just had done, or get rid of the rose garden so that they can have a concrete patio. She works very hard, and the teachers here that we have, we're lucky to have. And I'm, I'm hoping that there is a little bit more credit given to her and her staff. They go through enormous pains, because I know some of the people. Before it gets here, I've heard the discussions. What, what are they going to say about this? What are they going to say about that? And they don't want to be called out under a microscope in public. So they sharpen it and sharpen it and hone it and count on other things that they can do in order to save the county money. Nobody's walking in here and saying, well, this is how much I want. I go through this with customers every day with, with projects this afternoon. I, their project was about eight thousand dollars, and the owner says, well, you know, go and do it for five. No, here's, here's the material list. This is what it costs. This is the labor list. Do you have any argument that this is how it's going, how long it's going to take? No, but could you make a little bit less, less money? I charge materials. I charge ten percent for profit, ten percent for overhead. That's it. It's simple. You have the receipt. I'm not going beyond that. This isn't the lottery. You don't get to guess. I'm not just throwing these numbers out there. They're all written line by line by line by lines, and I've done this for forty years. The budget that was presented is the same way. It wasn't just thrown out there. It's line by line by line. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, not seeing any other hands in the room. There's a bunch of people on Zoom. Anyone wishing to speak during public comment, please raise your Zoom hand and be recognized. All right, not seeing any hands on Zoom. I'll go ahead and close public comment.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented, unless I need to do something.
I think it's a question of minutes.
Okay, sure. You want to yank the minutes?
Yes, please.
Adopt the consent agenda minus the minutes for adoption.
The motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Ms. Comer?
The, the issue with the minutes is really very simple. I believe Ms. Harmon's name is spelled incorrectly. It's an A instead of an O. Yeah. So if we can just.
I'll move to adopt the, Ms. Comer's. Typewriter interruption. Harmon with an A.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No opposed. All right. Now, to the fun part. Get to recognize, this is the, okay.
Wow. The, the, the end of an era.
Not yet. This resolution is of appreciation and commendation from the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors for the preparation and implementation of new medical treatment guidelines EMS protocols. Whereas the change of operational medical director in September 2024 to Dr. Jeffrey Joseph spurred the opportunity to create Rappahannock County-centric medical treatment guidelines. And whereas recognizing that the new protocols would affect all EMS agencies in the county, the EMS committee, under the direction of the Rappahannock County Emergency Services Management Coordinator, elected to create the EMS Protocol Subcommittee. And whereas the EMS Protocol Subcommittee worked tirelessly to draft medical treatment guidelines tailored to the needs of Rappahannock County citizens that were accepted and endorsed by Dr. Joseph. by Dr. Joseph. And whereas the EMS Committee prepared guidelines for precepting and releasing EMS providers, recognizing their understanding of the new protocols and their readiness to render EMS care within the Rappahannock County EMS system. Now therefore be it resolved that the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors hereby recognizes the vital service performed by the following members of the local EMS community and expresses its highest appreciation for outstanding service to the citizens and visitors of Rappahannock County. There's a long list, so bear with me. It's a great committee. First was Chair Wayne Dodson, David Bradley, Scott Chamberlain, J.B. Carter, Carol Ann Cole, Susan Fitzgerald, Lisa Palmer, Brian Ross, Kathy Stewart, Josh Waddell, Catherine Waters. The EMS Protocol Subcommittee was Chair Kathy Stewart, who's in the audience, Scott Chamberlain, Michael Damcock, Susan Fitzgerald, Tim McQuarrie, Josh Waddell, Operational Medical Director, Dr. Jeffrey Joseph, Emergency Services Manager Coordinator Darren L. Stevens. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread across the minutes of the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors for all citizens to reflect upon the service and accomplishments of these dedicated public safety partners adopted this fourth day of August 2025. Kathy, I think you should come up if you don't mind. Most people don't know...
Thanks, Dr. Stewart.
...how much effort Kathy puts into continued education, running calls herself, now that her foot's getting better, but the hours of volunteerism that you commit to the EMS departments around the county has been very beneficial for me, and I'm so glad you're there, and Mr. Stevens, you as well. Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
All righty, a little bit briefer. He's going to come up.
Yeah.
Come on up. Resurrection of appreciation for Rappahannock County Water and Sewer Authority member Andrew Haley. Whereas Andrew Haley served the citizens of Rappahannock County for 12 years as a member of the Rappahannock County Water and Sewer Authority, and whereas during his tenure on the Rappahannock County Water and Sewer Authority, he was elected to multiple officer terms, serving as Secretary, Treasurer, and Vice Chairman, and whereas he sacrificed countless hours as a volunteer for the betterment of the Sperryville sewer system, whereas his consistent support for the citizens of Sperryville and his deep knowledge of the Sperryville sewer system has earned him the admiration of the citizens of Rappahannock County, and whereas the members of the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors will always consider Mr. Haley a respected friend. Now therefore be it resolved that the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors extends its sincerest thanks to Andrew Haley for his service on the Rappahannock County Water and Sewer Authority and wishes him all of the best in future endeavors. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread across the minutes of the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors for all citizens to reflect upon the service and accomplishments of this dedicated public servant adopted this fourth day of August 2025.
Way to go, Andrew.
Madam Chair, can we take a five-minute recess?
Certainly, five-minute recess. All right, thank you, everyone.
You can get in there, Mr. No. 9, Fatma.
Next is the appointment to the Social Services Board. I was just explaining and apologizing to Gail that I did not reach out to her earlier about this agenda item. She did read the agenda, so she already knew. But just to let you know, Mr. Curry and I have discussed social services over the six-year period of time, and he kept saying, if you want to know, get on the board, if you want to know, get on the board. And so I went, you know what, this is my sixth year, I should get on the board. So that is why this is an agenda item, other than we have two term, or two people that are, their terms are expiring, and I'll hand that off to you.
Yeah, this agenda, the site was on your agenda last month, giving you advance notice that Mr. Bebaut and Ms. Melson's terms will be coming to an end on September 1st and October 6th, in the other order, sorry. Ms. Melson has indicated she is not interested in being reappointed. Mr. Bebaut has submitted an application for reappointment, he's not here today, so if the board is inclined to appoint him, you should do so while waving some formalities. And then there remains that vacancy. The Code of Virginia does envision a member of the Board of Supervisors to be able to sit on this body, and unlike the other terms who are set for four years and limited to two terms, this person would serve at the pleasure of the board. And if the boards have a mind to have a member on this body, you might consider it each January like you do with all the other appointments. My recommend, recommended action would be to just appoint Ms. Donahue, if that, if that's what you want to do, at the pleasure of the board until a subsequent appointment is made. And if you do that in January, great, if you don't do that in January, she's sentenced to, as long as she is a board member, or appointed, sorry.
(Inaudible).
So there you have it for you. Mr. Bebaut would love to continue to serve, and Ms. Donahue is offered to serve.
Then I will move to reappoint Harold Bebaut to the local service, Social Services Board for a term starting October 6th, 2025, and ending October 6th, 2029, and appoint Debbie Donahue to the local Social Services Board to serve at the pleasure of the board until a different appointment for the position is made.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Here, none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you very much for your...
Thanks, Gail.
Yes, ma'am? All right.
Madam Chair, would it be okay with the board if I ask Gail a question?
It's okay by me.
You guys okay with that? Gail, I was just wondering how the new space is. You guys have moved, correct?
I'm sorry, but...
You guys have moved, correct?
Yes, we have.
How is the new space?
The new space is fantastic in that we already, it's greatly expanded our ability to work with our community partners, and bringing, one of the things I'm happiest about, about the space, that it has become a service delivery point, but a community service for it, with one of our programs where Rappahannock citizens were having to go to Culpeper or to some other spot in the county to access the service, and now can be delivered at DSS offices, which I think is a huge help. And what it's also allowed us to do, we now have the, just the ability to allow for quality virtual participation. Thank you. Participation, when we are working with families and they can't get to us or their service providers, we can now do a virtual meetings that allow them to really get a better quality interaction, as opposed to just being through a phone and New York people talking to each other. So that's greatly helped as well, because some of our service providers are located out of town. And then we also, like I said, we've had some of our partners using the spaces for other staff have activated well. They've been able to transition from private offices to communal space. So while we have climate wars, we can handle them. They enjoy the light and the brightness, and it also is great for some of our partners. In fact, we are going to be working with Food Country this Friday, we're having a pretty kickable play, and one of our events for today is going to be walking around the Food Country meetings.
That's great.
Lots of opportunities for collaboration, and just that opens the mind wide as well.
That's great, I was going to hear, thank you, thanks.
Chester Gap Volunteer Fire Department Paid Provider Program update. Mr. Woodson, I don't know if you want to start this off with the public safety meeting discussion?
Sure, we did, I believe it was last Thursday. We, we called a special meeting of the County Public Safety Committee comprised of Mr. Stevens, Mr. Curry, the Sheriff, Chief Nick, Chair Donahue, me, and Chief Bradley from Company One. And the purpose of that meeting was to somewhat urgently consider the now untenable situation that we are facing vis-à-vis the Warren County Board of Supervisors' decision to end effective October 1, 2025 at 7:00 a.m., their support for the paid provider program at Company Nine, which is Chester Gap Volunteer Fire and Rescue Department. And as Chair of the Public Safety Body, I, I characterized our task at last Thursday's special call meeting as really looking at one of two options, one being we could use that gathering to brainstorm about questions of operational efficiency and how to really find a silver lining in this Warren County cloud that's been cast upon us and try to, try to think through how we could use this challenge to more effectively integrate Company Nine into our Rappahannock County system. So option one was to brainstorm and then to come back in short order so that we wouldn't be up against the October 1 deadline imposed upon us by Warren County. And then option number two is to take some action. And I think we all recognize and agree that we have strong leadership at Company Nine. Chief Brown, during the pandemic, was having difficulty keeping volunteers, and he came to us and asked the county taxpayers to support paid ALS, ALS and BLS providers up at Chester Gap, which we did, and that served as a catalyst for what's now, I think, a, a growing and highly successful paid provider program in Rappahannock County. So I think we all need to be grateful to Chief Brown for finding a way out of a difficult situation there. Warren County, by way of background, has been supporting the paid program to the tune of 60% of the total annual cost, which is approximately equivalent to the call volume that Chester Gap runs in Warren County, with Rappahannock County covering the other 40%. So other than thinking through our options and how best to pull Company Nine further into the Rappahannock County fold, recognizing that things, at least with respect to Warren County, are going to change, we also acknowledged a couple of uncontrolled variables that are hanging out there that hopefully will be resolved sooner rather than later. One is that the Warren County Board is likely to change significantly in the upcoming election in November, so that means that the sentiments, or the collective sentiments, the Warren County Board may shift toward the importance that, of Chester Gap and the role that Chester Gap, Company Nine, plays in Warren County's EMS services, particularly on the southern end of Warren County. And the other uncontrolled variable, of course, is the Conic lawsuit that continues to hang over Company Four, where we've had a very successful, Ms. Donahue is one of them, very successful volunteer program that has truly brought that company back from the ashes. And regrettably, this lawsuit hangs over you, us, all of us, and so it's difficult to plan too far ahead in terms of how Chester Gap, Company Nine, and Flint Hill, Company Four, might be able to join forces and optimize the equipment they have, the people they have, and how paid provider might be shared between Companies Nine and Four, because the lawsuit has not yet been resolved. So with the likely change that will occur in the next election in November in Warren County in terms of the board, and our hope that the Warren County Board, once newly constituted, will have a different view and see the benefit of continuing funding toward Chester Gap, and recognizing that we're not in a position yet to consider operational integration between Companies Nine and Four, in part because of the lawsuit that hangs over Company Four, we decided to take action. Ms. Donahue put forward a motion, it was approved unanimously with one caveat. The motion was to extend our funding through the, Rappahannock County's, expand Rappahannock County's funding through the end of the year to make up for the share that Warren County won't provide October, November, and December of 2025. But with the caveat, and Gary, I'll, I'll turn to you on the precise phrasing of this because I want to be very careful to say what it means and does not mean, but basically the sentiment of our public safety body, which I think is sensible and respectful toward our taxpayers, is that yes, we will bridge the gap, the funding gap created by Warren County's bailing out on Company Nine for the fourth quarter of the year, but that means that Chester Gap will no longer engage in station filling in Warren County when Warren County has an empty station and needs personnel, and then more precisely, Company Nine will limit its runs into Warren County in its, only in its first due area, which takes care of the station filling obligation.
Right, for the pay providers, so if there are crews of volunteers that are running, are available, then that wouldn't necessarily have the same restrictions of the pay providers. And it's just, right now, Warren County automatically dispatches Chester Gap for their first due area and any subsequent need, and the change would be that Warren County would be empowered to directly dispatch Chester Gap for their first due area, but they would have to go through our dispatch center for any expanded mutual aid need, just like any other neighboring county would call our dispatch. And our dispatch can then determine availability of the nearest crew, who's, who's available, who's not, who can go, whether it's okay to send them. If we have a lot going on in the county, they may not be able to send Chester Gap deep into Warren if everybody else on our side of the line is, is busy with other incidents. So that decision-making is left on a case-by-case situation.
So I think that, that really is an important point in two respects. Number one, and I think Chief Brown will line, I know Chief Brown would be the first to say this, he and his team are not turning their backs on anyone, and Warren County will continue to be served as, as Chester Gap has been required to do for those areas where Warren County counts on support. And as Gary just mentioned, pre-existing mutual aid agreements still apply, and it's simply required, it simply requires working through our dispatch center to get that done if there's ever a call that's, that requires more hands on deck. So I think that is important, that no one's turning their back on, on Warren County, at least from a Company Nine standpoint. And then second, we are acknowledging the fact that Rappahannock County taxpayers are picking up the slack here into that end, out of respect for them. We're draw, we're going to draw a line and some rules that we will abide by with respect to what, what Company Nine does and where it goes and when.
All of that for the next, for an extended three months, right, through the end of the calendar year.
Yep. Gives us time to plan instead of rushing to some sort of resolution that might stick.
Right, and, and I do think that there is potentially a real opportunity to gain efficiencies in terms of our overall coordinated system across companies. I think thankfully, there are not, there are not many egos at play here. I think everyone has, has our community's interests at heart, and as I've said to Chief Brown, and I know Debbie has reinforced, it's a great company, and it serves a population center, to the extent we have one in Rappahannock County, and we would love, as time goes by, for them to look toward Rappahannock County more and more as that company strengthens and grows. So the recommendation to the, to the Board of Supervisors from the Public Safety Body is that we extend the EMS paid provider program funding through the second, second calendar quarter of fiscal year 2026, which would be through December 31, allocate additional $45,000 to the program from our fire service fund, and I am putting this in the form of a motion. It would come out of the fire service fund, fund balance, and the motion also calls for empowering our county administrator to place service area restrictions, as we've just discussed, on the Chester Gap. to place service area restrictions, as we've just discussed, on the Chester Gap Volunteer Fire Department paid providers consistent with the actions set forth by the Public Safety Body and their recommendation of the Board of Supervisors.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second discussion?
So I think that you mentioned this, but Chief Brown is supportive of this, this exact plan?
Yeah. Yeah, he would have been here, that his crew was fantastic, I think, today.
Okay.
And I did speak with him, and he knows we are voting on this today. He is all for supporting Rappahannock County and stated on multiple occasions, there'll be no more in-station in Warren County. And obviously, if there's a nine one one call and it's in his area, they're going to do the best they can with the people they have. But because of this situation, I know we had a couple of days where they've been BLS and not ALS, so they're trying to get as many volunteers now as possible to work along with the paid people.
Well, I just want to thank you both on the Public Safety Committee for doing this. Because it's, it's a sort of a, as Mr. Woodson said, sort of a mess. Which will get fixed up, but thank you guys for taking care of it. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, and it's not ideal.
It's not ideal, but this is good.
I mean.
I'm glad we don't have to panic and rush into a resolution.
Because, yeah, we don't. I think Debbie's exactly right. We don't want to rush into sort of a forced sort of reorganization of how we're using these paid folks in our system. It needs to be thought out. It has to be data based on call data, call frequency for due areas. And I think all that analysis will take time. And as I said at the outset, I hope that it, whether or not the Warren County Board collectively changes its sentiment come January, remains to be seen. But at least, I think, we all have to remain optimistic that there's an opportunity to seize here. And that maybe, just maybe, even under a worst case scenario, we end up with a stronger system thanks to what Chief Brown was able to start back in twenty twenty. So.
And it was unanimous?
Yeah.
Yes.
At the Public Safety Committee. And then just for those who may not know, can you remind us the professionals and the wisdom on the Public Safety Committee? Like, including yourselves and like Sheriff?
Mr. Stevens, Mr. Stevens, the Sheriff, there's one, there is one representative from the Chiefs. So currently, it rotates, and currently, that is Company One, and Company One has a new chief, and that's Chief David Bradley. Two appointees from the Board of Supervisors, currently Ms. Donahue and me. And one citizen member who happens to be Chief Nick from Company Four. So it's a, I think, a, a strong group, and I certainly am not, I'm not there for my expertise. I'm there by appointment from this board, but you know, I've taken a ride in an ambulance before, I suppose, so I've got that.
That counts for something. It was a very good conversation.
Yeah.
And.
Very thoughtful.
Chief Brown, Captain Swan, and Chief, or Kevin Williams were in attendance at the Public Safety Meeting. So we really did get, we heard from everybody. This really does make the most sense on such a short turnaround, and it's sad that Warren County is basically thinking this wasn't the most affordable, well-run situation they could have. They've been sold that it wasn't. So I'm hopeful that some additional people and some new information may change their mind. All right, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 No opposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Woodson, Community AED?
Sure, on the AED funding, I think we'll just keep this here because I feel our momentum is building, thanks in part to Ms. Bond and Mr. Anderson, who recently wrote to me, very exciting, and mentioned the possibility of Lions Club interest in this project. And from a, from a tangible rollout perspective, Mr. Stevens and Mr. Curry are going to meet this week to move ahead with the deployment of the first two Community AEDs at Settles Grocery in Flint Hill and at the Quickie Mart on two eleven. So those will be two visible sites, and I think very logical places to place the first two units. And I think then, whether it's the Lions Club, and I also have a contact at Valley Health for starters, and as mentioned some time ago, potential private funding sources, I think we can really get this rolling. It'll be neat to just get a couple of units out there. And Mr. Stevens had a friend who was just in New Zealand, who was visiting New Zealand, who sent this photo, and it, basically, it's an AED unit, and behind it is a placard that notes that the AED unit is part of a community program. And so we've already talked about the fact that we will include signage that demonstrates these are part of a rural network. We just have to think of some catchy description with the Rappahannock County logo so that everyone knows these are maintained and and managed by the county as a system, as opposed to one offs. But I think it's a step in the right direction, and, you know, I've said it a million times, and I think it's worth repeating that, to me, based on my own experience, these simple inexpensive devices deployed in logical places in our community truly will be a life-saving bridge for a time gap that, no matter how incredible our, our volunteers and paid providers might be, there's just simply no way to beat the math on surviving sudden cardiac arrest because the outside limit before brain damage occurs is roughly seven minutes. And where can you get in the county in seven minutes? So these, I think, are an important, practical step in the right direction. And we'll see how things like drone-deployed AED technology evolves over time, but maybe that's going to be the next part. But we'll start with these. And we'll make them visible, and hopefully, people will never have to use them, but if they do, hopefully, lives will be saved.
I think in line with that, there'll be some sort of training every now and then if somebody wants CPR or AED and/or AED training. So keep an eye out there. Hopefully, we'll start doing that once these start getting deployed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Fiber to the home broadband project, anything new?
I did add just a quick note in here. All Points has informed us that they have submitted five and a half miles of land use permit applications to VDOT. So I reached out to VDOT and said, hey, you got any applications? And they said, yeah, we've got five and a half miles. So that's good. And that's for underground along VDOT. I think, you know, the part of the network is intended to be overhead, too, and so I'm not sure if RAC has had any interaction with them right yet, but that'll be part of the package as well at some point. That's all we know. So permit review time is two, three weeks. This was a week or two ago, so it's a new process starting July, so it might take a cycle, a review cycle, to get it straight. And once those permits are issued, we're told that we should see vehicles in the field. And then that process, application process will be used going forward as a template for the other miles that need to be done.
Yeah, and I will just tell you, I've heard anecdotally along the way that All Points Broadband has been pretty active in identifying physical addresses and locations for fiber cabinets that will define the initial fiber service areas. And I know that I'm pretty sure that two or three of the physical sites for the fiber service area cabinets are pretty close to final. So that would be like cabinets rap one, rap two, rap three. So I think it's starting to come together, and we will wait and see, and drive by and honk and scream when we see a vehicle digging a hole in the ground.
Fingers and toes crossed.
Yeah.
They had told us, I think, ninety days out, there'd be some sort of communication to customers that might be receiving.
Right. So that, you know, to build the cabinets, they have to string the fiber, and then once that is done, then they would be able to serve customers. So ninety days before they're ready to serve a customer is when they're supposed to be notifying customers.
And then the one, one thing that I think they're doing, in part because we're constantly pressuring them about this, is that they are going to try to connect people near those cabinets before they finish the complete fiber service area, just for the sake of getting someone on the system. So that's good. So ostensibly, someone soon.
Is a lucky number.
Might, might receive All Points broadband service, which I think is important.
Well, that is really good news. And I apologize, can, we moved away from the AED item faster than I was ready. So I ju, I just wanted to say thank you to the Lions Club because for those people, they are, they are incredible. I, I've just had the pleasure to work with them on a couple of other projects, and you know, it's just, they're incredible. There are no other words. So that's it. I just wanted to say.
Thank you. Anything else on All Points?
No, that's exciting, too. But that's not as cool as the Lions Club.
All right, where are we? Network modernization. I'm excited about this one, just because I think Mr. Woodson and I said like five years ago, how do we get some of that Comcast off of our accounts payable?
Comcast, Bright Speed. So this board has talked about some of our issues with our phone system and networking for quite some time. We have CCTV issues, coverage issues right now. Just about two weeks ago, I was talking with Lieutenant Jenkins about a phone issue, and we reached out to Bright Speed, and they said, well, we used to know a guy who knew how to work on that, but he's now in South Carolina, and he, he's private, he could come up. So we're really living on borrowed time with the phone system. And, and there's a really easy fix for that, is just go to a VoIP phone system, which are very mature now. Unfortunately, those rely on a good network between your buildings, which we do not have. And so I've, I've brought several, a couple of options to the board to improve the network, move us over to a new phone system, and deploy a modern video surveillance system for the courthouse and surrounding area. For various reasons, over time, they just didn't seem to fit right. We talked about vendor A, vendor D, and now there's, I think Mr. Carney said, was there a vendor C? There is. I'm sure there are all the letters of the alphabet, but reviewed with another vendor out of Front Royal, the, the whole situation, and got a much better comfort level with their approach and design with redundancy, and being nearby to be able to provide after installation services. The only problem was that was more costly than the three hundred fifty thousand dollars that the board set aside for the project, which, which was largely funded by courthouse security funds. So we kept looking for ways to close that financial gap, came across an opportunity for an, a unexpected round of PSAP funding for the primary service answering, public safety answering point? I always get that wrong. Nine one one center. And there's enough of this that touches the nine one one center that we were successful with a grant application that funded some operational costs for nine one one, as well as the nuts and bolts of the firewalls and all the stuff that has to go in the sheriff's office, and so we received that hundred fifty thousand, when we were expecting to receive about twenty some odd thousand. So long story short, this project is now fully funded if the board wants to move it forward. I did attach the proposal. I will tell you that there, there is some carrying costs to the proposal, some of which I'm not planning to accept right now. Those are like help desk services for each and every end user PC. That's very costly and not something that we budgeted. We'll keep looking for ways to do that in an efficient way, but we will be bringing them onboard if you move this project forward for their server care, to make sure that we have somebody on call should some issue happen with any of the servers. That's what we're doing right now with the new CAD servers that they just helped us bring online.
Well, I will move to award the network modernization CCTV and VoIP projects to ACOM, or ACOM LLC of Front Royal, and to authorize the county administrator to negotiate the final agreement that meets all public procurement requirements, leveraging available cooperative contracts for all services and equipment with a total project budget of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
That's amazing that this PSAP grant. Was this a recent grant, or was this?
Yeah, well, the, the next generation nine one one funding for the state came out with a giant pool of money to get everybody over to NG nine one one. There was a little bit left over, and so they opened up subsequent rounds, and that's what was able to fund this.
Nice job.
Thank you, Bonnie.
One question.
Thank you, Gary.
We all, we're all in it. Thank you, Lieutenant Jenkins.
One question I have, when the tavern switched over to voiceover IP with Comcast, they're, they provided the phone system, and I understand that you're buying your own, but they weren't intuitive. You know, when you're used to transferring a call, it was crazy difficult, to the point that we just didn't use half of what the phone could do because we couldn't figure it out. So.
Well, that'll be ten times more than phones do now, if we can do half of what a modern system can do.
Yes.
So that'll be good.
Training.
We actually, we demoed a, a system for a while from a different vendor. It was quite intuitive, and it was all tied in with computers. It was very convenient. This one won't be quite the same, but it's a very, it's deployed a lot across the country. The phones are maybe the most deployed phone, so I think we'll be okay. And when they don't work right, we'll just call the people in Front Royal.
So.
Which is nice.
Can I ask just a sort of a ground level question? Is this for all county offices, including?
Yes.
Mr. Goff's office?
Yes.
Your office?
Yes.
Building office?
Yes.
So the infrastructure that we put in over at the building office is just?
There is a fiber line that runs there now. We think we can leverage it. If not, it's going to, it will be separated from the network, but it'll have VPNs back. It'll still have to have a Comcast modem. We at our office will still have a Comcast modem and VPN back. But Mr. Goff's office will have a wireless connection, which will be secure and.
Rexaford?
Uh, no. Not the Rexaford. In the library, we envision we'll, we'll jump into the phone system after we get all this other stuff done. That's the very simple part. Their network is already robust.
Okay.
That'd be easy to expand it, then they can have the transferability and stuff between the offices as well.
So you'll be able to transfer a call from your office to the sheriff or to Mr. Goff's office, theoretically?
In all these other offices, they can do that now. Because we're remote and there were limitations, we can't do that now. Even though we're on the three-digit internal dialing, it's, it's a big mess. And if you were to go into the basement of the sheriff's office and see this nineteen eighty phone system, you would say, why, why have we waited this long?
Okay.
Yeah. But yes, it'll all work. And it's soft, so you, you can load it on your cellphone and take the IP call in another country and act like you're in your office.
That's amazing.
Yeah, that's so cool.
Because Julia Shannon's on, on the Zoom call. And not to bury the lead, four hundred fifty thousand dollars of that, how much local tax money will be going into this? Just, can we just call that out?
Yeah, well, approximately nineteen thousand dollars.
That's what I thought. It's impressive.
Yep.
Several, fees by several people who've stopped through this building on other days.
Right.
All right, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah.
Sorry it took so long.
Does that mean that'll be the last time we see that agenda?
Yes.
Oh, my gosh.
Oh, my gosh.
That's, that's a landmark, right?
Even better, they say two to four months, so.
Yeah, it's a great timeline. New commercial activity and related matters, Mr. Woodson, anything?
Sure, I'll just, I'll just use it as an opportunity to, I'm sure some of you might have seen various social media posts and a little newspaper reporting on some of the growing pains at the Rush River Commons housing development here in the town of Washington. And I think we all recognize, as local representatives, sometimes we get calls just because people don't know who else to call when something happens. And I know, over the years, Debbie and I have certainly done a variety of things that you'd never believe fell into your job description, but I also that you'd never believe fell into your job description, but I also find that kind of work, and I think you would agree, and you all would agree, is very satisfying, when you can just solve a problem. So with that background, I have been taking calls from residents at Rush River Commons as their local representative, and most of the problems have centered around a state-of-the-art, but still finicky geothermal HVAC system that seems to be turning off whenever there are power surges or power outages, and then it has to be manually reset. So, in particular, I want to thank Richie Burke, who was sort of the site development overseer on the new construction, who through no fault of his own, has become kind of the, my go-to person just for getting information back to the residents on what's happening, when it's going to happen. Obviously, a very hot summer, not ideal, but the team that, the property owners and Mr. Burke are truly doing everything they can to get that problem straightened out, and I'm grateful to them for paying attention to these issues. But like any new construction, stuff happens and.
And still fairly new technology, I guess.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, it's a, if you haven't driven around there, it's quite pleasant and nice landscape and pleasant environment. I sat on someone's porch and listened about their HVAC system for a while, and it was quite lovely, actually. Because we're sitting outside and not in our hot apartment. But, but still, I think it's, you know, it is a nice area that they, they built there, and I'm sure over time, they'll straighten these things out. I just want you to all be aware that I've kind of put myself in the middle of it, not by choice, because people just call me, and it's fine. So.
Well, then, I feel compelled to share for full disclosure. I, I too, sometimes, as you know, residents from all over will reach out to different supervisors. So, understanding that it was, you know, it wasn't my district, I trusted that others were taking care of it. However, I did do a little digging and learned that I am acquaintances with a couple of people on the foothills board. So, I called.
Which is the?
Property management.
Company that's based in Warren.
Yeah, so, week before last, I, you know, I made a, I called them, and I said, hey, you might not know, the right information might not be getting to the, the right person. So I had the pleasure of speaking with both the secretary and the executive director of that board. And I, I want to say a couple of things first. Hats off to a citizen or two who really strongly advocated for their neighbors. You know, that is what Rappahannock is, 100%. So, like hats off to that, her. But I will say that when I spoke with, I believe it's Mr. Reed, he shared with me, he's been doing this 26 years, and he's never come across this. So to Mr. Whitson's point, new construction, new technology, and then an unusual amount of storms, and, you know, what was it, two, a two-week period or something? So, yeah, hopefully, hopefully that will all settle, you know, settle down, you know, so.
Thanks for that effort.
Yeah.
Little did I know, but.
I know, well, hey, I didn't know until I Googled him, and I said, hey, I know that guy.
That's great.
Teamwork. All right, subdivision of land?
Mr. Carney, I think, missed the meeting when there was a preliminary discussion about this, and he said that he had been receiving a number of comments from citizens, and likely other board members were, and maybe it would be a good idea to have it back on the agenda, just to have a conversation about what it is that is being done and why. So I pulled together a short narrative, just explaining that the General Assembly adopted two bills this year that affected subdivision ordinances across the state, one of which you heard about in public comment, which requires approvals to be made by a designated agent instead of a planning commissioner board, and it gave a carve-out to localities with less than 5,000 citizens, of which we do not meet that carve-out. The other bill shortened the timeline for approval and review cycles, and with a very complicated process for first and second reviews, reviews that are impacted by VDOT or Health Department, but it places the whole timeline. I think it's probably been a very long time since the subdivision ordinance has been modified and was fairly out of step with state code right now anyway. And as we heard, we are Dillon real estate, so we can write anything we want in our subdivision ordinance, but if it's not aligned with the state code, doesn't really matter. We have to follow state code. Or at least if we try to apply our code and go to court, we'll lose very quickly. So, I think probably the switch to the designated agent might, that's just really guesswork on my part, might affect 15 or 20% of the localities in the Commonwealth. The other 75, 80% have already, long ago, changed to having a designated agent, and many of those cases are probably more staff available to do that. Here in Rappahannock County, in the nearly eight years I've been here, hasn't been a single subdivision that's gone to the planning commissioner or board supervisors, because they're very much not cost-effective in Rappahannock County because of the densities and everything else, and they just don't happen. Or people just divide more than 50 acres at a time, and by your definitions, that's not a subdivision. It's carved out on the, on the high end. So, I don't think it's super consequential to us that the state is doing this. More importantly, the rules that one must follow to have a subdivision, the minimum acreage, the minimum widths, the maximum dwelling density, those are all the same, nothing is changing. And, you know, it's a checklist of items that are important for a community for a subdivision to be approved. The 50-foot right-of-way requirement that came up a while, that's still in there, and must be approved. The issue in the past across the state is that these are ministerial acts, they are not legislative acts. If, if an application meets the standards, then it must be approved. And if you, if a political body does not approve it, then you're likely going to lose in court. And so, the General Assembly is kind of catching up to that and making sure people understand that that's the case. I'd be happy to go through the details of the ordinance. The, the need of it is really just a copy and paste of the state code for the preliminary plat and final plat sections of the long list of the timing on when a application is submitted and then returned, and then submitted and returned, and centipede, and centipede H, all of that. It's really just a cut and paste of the state code, which we must follow. The, our current code does say that we can require preliminary plat for any projects. State code only allows us to do that if it's over 50 lots, so we fixed that. We still allow people to submit a preliminary plat if they want to for less, but we can't force them to do that. That was something that Berkeley Group caught a while back as well. But I'm happy to go through any of it and any detail board members want, here or one-on-one at any time. This will have to go to public hearing, the planning commission, and the board of supervisors. And I guess the planning commission will consider whether it's ready for public hearing at their next meeting. They're going to do that at their last meeting, but they weren't able to hold that meeting due to a quorum issue.
So I have a question. Are these approvals or disapprovals appealable?
I think pretty much everything out of Title 15 to Chapter 22 is appealable to the courts. It's not a BZA matter.
So, this is a question for Mr. Goff. So, Mr. Goff, so imagine this happens, and somebody comes through and they want a subdivision approval. They get it. Is the public allowed to appeal that approval?
I think they have standing.
Yeah. But if they have standing, there's still a method, there's still an avenue for appeal. They can appeal.
I think 30 days.
It's a pretty good chance, yes, if they can demonstrate standing.
And the time clock for this, 30 days?
That's my recollection.
Well, yeah, it was 60, but now it's.
I think it's 30 days.
So my question then is, is there a way for us to notice this? So, the question is, is those who may have standing, who might want to, wouldn't know, might not know about it if we don't notice it?
Yeah, what, we talked about this before, and I think, we talked about this when we were talking about changing the ordinances when the Berkeley Group was going through this, and I think the best way to do that is to have a public listing on the website that people can check anytime they want. If, if a subdivision has a, can affect the neighbor's ability to access their groundwater, then we have to notify the neighbor. But that's the only instance that you have to notify a neighbor. But we could, we could build these out on the website, and people can check anytime they want.
So, but what about actually noticing it in the paper?
Well, we can do that, too.
Is there any way to have the applicant pay for that?
Yeah, you set the application fee how you want. The problem is, the timelines are getting tighter and tighter, and so, just because we put a notice in the paper advising the community that something's happening, doesn't mean we won't have to respond to comments within 30 days anyway, and it'd be too late, but.
It just may give, and, you know, to Mr. Goff's point, it's just like, so if somebody that would have standing, which would presumably be somebody who has adjoining property. Yeah, they, they, having it on the website is a good thing, but also, if they miss that 30 window, 30-day time clock for appeal, I, I just think that if there's something we can do to make sure that all of our constituents have the ability to know what's going on, I think it would make people feel better.
Yeah, and the summers, and I also talked about, you can use yard signs like we do now for zoning actions.
And put up.
However, subdivisions happen all the time. There's a boundary line adjustment between my two parcels. I just want to move the line here, mine and my neighbor's. There's a minor one creating one extra lot. And that would be burdensome to try to notice every single one of those. Right now, the subdivision ordinance is set up where it's administratively approvable for three lots or less, and it's supposed to go through the planning commission process when you get more than that.
Right.
I would think a similar threshold for some sort of public notice would be good.
Exactly.
And that can be done by policy, or you could embed it in the ordinance if you want.
So, Mr. Goff, you don't, do you think the legality of doing that is, okay, so what I'm, I'm, the reason I'm asking is I feel like the General Assembly is trying to make this process easier. And by requiring the applicant to pay for notice, would that be?
They'd pay for notice now because there's public hearings.
Right, but I'm saying, we're eliminating.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, by putting that on them, are we creating an issue? Or do you think we can do that?
I, I don't want to give you an opinion right now.
Okay.
I'd like to.
That's my question.
It's, you know, there's, right now, there are mailing requirements for certain agencies with a subdivision plat and all that. And I, we went, Carrie and I went through it with a pretty fine tooth comb, the new amendments, but I don't recall seeing anything about that. Do you, Carrie?
No, I, I don't. And I think, my gut feeling, which I can say, I'm not a lawyer, is that we can add those extra steps on. They're probably not grounds for any approval to be overturned if you miss it. Right? So if we say we're going to notice the neighbors under all these circumstances, we don't do it. I don't know that that neighbor can then appeal because we didn't give notice. It's not required by the Code of Virginia.
That, that would be a kind of a trap, kind of be a litigation.
Yeah, we don't want to do that.
Sticky, sticky trap, but, you know, even so, you know, you can always put, you can always add language and that it's substantive. I mean, it's procedural, it's not substantive, and doesn't create a crime of right of action.
And all of these.
Right.
So. If people show up at a public hearing for subdivisions and zoning matters, then all, any notice issues are void anyway. If you show up and you're here.
Yeah.
Despite all our, we screwed it up 10 times.
Yeah, but we're not having public hearings.
No, but I mean, if they send a notice or do something, they.
Absolutely. So that was my only thinking, was that I've had constituents ask, what can we do about it? And I think the only thing we can do about it is just do all we can as our local government to notice it.
Yeah.
And whatever we can do in our capacity, we should do.
Yeah. So, from staff's perspective, then, the big question, and I think Art is a little bit looking to do, is, is that something you want in the ordinance, or is that a policy that you want? Say, for example, the zoning signs, no, they're not ordinance. That's kind of practice, not even policy. But, you know, to what, how do you want that?
Limited to whether or not the, the agent would be required to ensure that all adjoining property owners were noticed by mail. Does that kind of narrows the issue a little bit? Would that be sufficient to apply on that?
Yeah, the question is, is what if they don't? I don't think we can hold them to anything. I mean, could, could, could somebody that would have standing hold them to that? You know, if they miss their third, if somebody doesn't do it.
I suppose.
And they miss that window, and they say, it's the 31st day. Well, yeah, I never mailed them. I didn't really want to. We don't, nobody has any recourse, right?
Well, I mean, the, the applicant would mail them, the agent wouldn't mail them, like we do now for resumés.
Yeah, I was, I was wanting to make sure that the agent would be, have that responsibility.
The county agent.
County agent.
Got it, got it.
Which is what happens now for special exceptions and resumés.
Not, not the applicant.
Perfect.
But we want, we would want there to be a threshold if we can, so that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yep, perfect. Yeah, that's perfect. That's a good idea. That's a way better idea, actually, because now you're just limiting it to the zone of actually people who would actually have standing.
Oh, that whole standing is a.
Yeah, well, I mean, standing can be a little bit, you know, in the neighborhood, not necessarily adjoining properties.
Yeah.
But it's like somebody else, like Carney in the big year, you know, some kind of review shed objection or something. All those lines might be half a mile away. They may want to claim.
Try.
But, yeah, you just have to look at, phrase the Rappahannock, the zoning law, you know, on standing. That's, but I think if we were to say that it would be the agent's responsibility to mail all contiguous property owners a notice of an appeal period, that that, that's probably something that would be, I would think, safe.
Yeah.
Who's going to be, who's going to worry about that?
So the question is, is that something the board wants to see in an ordinance that goes out to public hearings? Is that, do you want to have a parallel policy? It could be a board policy, saying, for subdivisions, we expect the, you know, our staff to do these things.
Well, do you guys want to think about it and let us know what you think is the best thing for us to do?
I'll draft an opinion for the next meeting.
Okay, thank you, Art.
Yeah, because I thi- I think the worst thing, you know, we've already talked about how our agent could be stretched. So I think the worst thing that could happen is we put something in place thinking we're going to remedy one potential problem, and then we create more, because then he or she has to do more.
More work.
Yeah, extra, extra work. So I, I do like the, you know, mailing them, like, directly to those people it will impact, but.
We would use like the address on file with the commissioner of revenue, because that's a problem.
Yeah, we, I just want to be mindful that more work means more space for mistakes, and we don't.
Not to mention, we're having to get that hamster wheel up to speed real quick to get the comments.
Exactly, yeah.
I do think noticing in the paper is also another route. You can just do that in the website. So you could do either.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, website, website's easy, a sign's pretty easy. You know, if we say, all subdivisions, three lots or more, we want to have it in the newspaper and, and assign. Well, that's pretty easy for us to adopt as a policy.
And have the applicant pay for the ads.
Right.
Set the applicant, the fee, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Right now, and I think when you did that, we recognize that the fee probably should be a sliding scale based on the number of lots, and so it's a, I forget what it is, $1,000 plus X, $100 per lot or something like that.
We just did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it should more than cover it.
Okay.
Good. All right, Board Committee reports, recreational facilities?
I'll have to give you all a, a double report next month. I was on vacation for their meeting in July, so I did not attend.
Public Safety Committee.
We are, I think, that's probably based on our other agenda, you know?
Planning Commission, Miss, Miss, not here, anybody have anything, Mr.?
I think they missed their meeting, for lack of a form. Now, there were no public hearings on that agenda. Only consideration whether to put this ordinance out for public.
Their next public meeting on the plan is Chester Gap, August 25th or something.
Have to look it up on the internet.
Yes, all right, so August 18th is Castleton, and August 25th is Chester Gap. Both are at 6:00 PM, for anybody that wants to attend. All right, Fire Levy Board, I assume you guys didn't meet?
We did not meet. Should be a meeting sometime soon, for the bills from the last six months.
Right.
That's been nailed down by the chair, yes.
Treasurers Report, cash flow's always a good one, and then the sales tax, it's like making up for meals and lodging a little bit, I think. And then the sales tax, it's like making up for meals and lodging a little bit, I think, which is good.
Yeah, you can see the cash position is very similar where it's been the last three years. Are we, I was, in fact, I was just looking this morning, um, on the revenue side of our budget now that we got the, the beautifully bound document. And am I correct that we're between sales tax revenue, meals and lodging tax revenue, we're now trending up toward 1.8 million dollars? Does that sound about right?
I think you have the numbers right there.
I'm trying to find.
Oh, okay.
I'm trying to find it quickly.
Can I?
One.
Just give me a look.
Yeah. It just was a, because for a while I was stuck, I would always tell people one and a half and really we're at 1.8, I think, and I.
Five sixty.
Sales is 1,065 and meals is 840.
Even more, 1.9.
Well, 1.9, yeah.
1.9.
Wow, we're almost getting to 2.
Yeah.
Hang on though, the eight, the 840, assume the increase rate, right?
It's closer to 560 maybe.
It is closer to 560, so that's 1.6 million?
Okay, 1.6. Okay, yeah. And then real property, real property, not personal, just real is 11. So we're over wherever that works out to.
You know, that first revenue section is about what you're talking about, right?
Yeah. Yeah, so the first revenue section is 14, including personal property taxes. So it's nice because we're above 10% in terms of non, or non-real property and personal property tax revenue coming from other sources.
A lot of other revenue sources are, are restricted to a particular social services or a comp board to salaries for that particular thing. Those are very flexible on however the board wants to use them.
So meals and lodging, okay, I see it's, it's projected 840, but you're saying that that was at 6%?
That was at 6%, that was.
I see, right.
Two-thirds of that.
And then you showed that variance, which is 230.
Yeah.
260, I'm saying.
It was 2, 280.
280. Okay.
Any other reports we want to look at? All right, um, legal matters, nothing's changed. With the company four in the Supreme Court, if that happens in October, there's no magic limit as to how long they have before they come back.
Delivery, right, some charter leads.
Gotcha. All right.
And it, and it's not necessarily going to be in October.
Right.
It's just the next opportunity.
Gotcha. All right, matters presented by the board. Let's come, where you want to start?
Sure, um, and I'm not real sure what I'm going to ask here, um, but I don't want to lose sight, only because I'm very excited about it. I don't want to lose sight about, um, the very small amount of money that we put aside to invest in tourism for our county. And, um, you know, I would, I have some ideas about how we should move forward on that. But, um, obviously I'm not the only one to have to consider those ideas. But if you all trust me to work with Ms. Jewel, um, I, I would love to.
Do you need a motion? Can I?
Trust it.
Go for it.
Can I make a, can I make a motion to?
See, we generally don't, I think by definition, you don't take action in matters, so.
Just think it's on tape, go for it.
Okay.
Go for it.
Thank you for doing that.
Thank you. That was easy.
Where's the button?
Yeah, Mr. Whitson.
Is that it?
That's the only thing I have.
I'm glad, I'm glad you're still here, because I only have one thing to say. And that is Jeff Henry of Rappahannock Electric Co-op rocks. He rocks, and here's why. Seven, uh, seven members, of which I'm one, over and over and over. Now, he'll say, it wasn't over and over, it was only three or four times. It seemed like seven of us were losing power all the darned time for about a three-week period. And I'm in touch with him real time via text. And he's talking to the guys in the field, solving the problem. You're the best, you're the best.
Thank you. I'll credit this to the young guys, though.
I know.
They really rock.
No, but you're a great communicator. And then we had that earlier, really interesting exchange about Mount Marshall Road, um, during that bigger outage and where the power was coming from. And I just so appreciate what you do. And you do it with a smile on your face and you take your job really seriously. And I'm grateful, I'm grateful. And I sing your praises all the time. And hopefully John Hughes is listening, which I'm sure he's not, but.
He should be.
You should send him this recording.
Yes.
Get this sound back and send it to you.
Yeah. You're, you do a great job.
Mr. Carney?
Uh, Mr. Currie, do you know what's going on with the traffic counters? I've had some constituents ask me, I think there's.
Oh, it's just a, I assume it's, I've seen them. Uh, VDOT routinely, uh, updates traffic counts throughout the county, um, not annually every other year. So they move them around different routes.
I think it's one of them.
But they're single, single strips, so it's just counting cars, not checking speed.
Oh, gotcha, okay. Yeah, would that inform anything?
A lot of things like, um, the six-year secondary line and rural rustic, you need more than 50 vehicles a day and average. And so that, that, you know, probably drives some of their capital determinations.
But they don't necessarily do that when they're thinking about tarring and chipping roads.
No, I don't think so.
Yeah.
That's more of a condition assessment and cycle. I can point you to the website where you can see the traffic counts for the last 20 years.
Oh, interesting.
Case your board.
Yeah, case your board.
Thank you, that's it.
Speaking of that, I have noticed the sign near the schools that showing the speed cameras are coming.
Posts are up, um, permit was modified to include the power to them, so it's coming along. The independent companies do it all that.
So it's good to see it.
Can you remind me how that's funded?
They fund it.
And then take a cut?
They take a cut out of each case that is, each fine that is levied through the civil.
Are they doing it just at the elementary school and the high school?
Yes.
And not up at Wakeville with those flashing lights?
Correct, I think possibly it could go up there at some point in time, but that's.
And all that revenue will go to the sheriff's office?
No, it's going general, it's general fund. And there were some bills in, in general assembly last year that would further restrict it, but they didn't pass, is my recollection.
They didn't pass.
So we'll have to keep an eye on that.
So it just goes into the general fund?
Just in the general fund. It's $18,000 for half a year.
Estimated.
Estimated.
We'll know when we know.
Yep.
Per camera?
Total.
Total for the two cameras?
Depends on how often you drive through.
I don't think we want to ask people to speed.
How often she, I think, as I understand it, anytime school is in session, she could, the sheriff could turn them, those lights on.
Yep.
So she is reasonable and she doesn't do that. But there are some localities that will turn them on at 7:45 AM and leave them on until 6:00 PM when sports practices are gone. But she runs them when most localities run them. But like she could choose to turn them on, on football game nights, she could, you know.
Graduation and all that good stuff, yeah.
I did not know that, interesting.
Uh, the only thing I had is a kudos as well for Mr. Nesbit, um, was kind enough to go up with me to Chester Gap, a certain road where the buses turn around, was getting, um, worn out and rutted and just not good for the neighbors on that road. Um, and he rode up with me and took a look at it and he does believe it's pavable. Uh, could not give me a timeframe, but, um, I know the neighbors will be very happy when that gets done. And probably the bus drivers, because turning around is much easier on pavement. All right, recess until 7?
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Jeff, thanks for everything, man.
Thanks again for getting my power on like months ago, when I texted you, amazing.